I'm going to call this, uh, meeting of the Board County Board of Commissioners work session to order. And we have one item on the agenda. Now we discuss the draft strategic plan, which I will now turn over to our administrator, Matt Johnson.
Hi, David. Thank you Chair. What we have is the draft strategic plan that sets up just a summary of the different items that we've, we've discussed, that we've done the community outreach as well as the the bullet items and priorities that we discussed as during our two day retreat a month or so ago. This is a summary and draft of it with some, as you go through it, does have some breakdown of action items, a couple suggested action items that came about during our strategic plan. As we had discussed before, the Board of Commissioners is the final determiner of the strategic plan. And so we would like to today to take an opportunity to review the mission statement, vision statement, values, which values wasn't really fully developed during that time. And quite honestly, we have too many. So if we want to slim those down, but then revisit what those five strategic priorities are, massage those to fit the needs and the goals of, of the Board of Commissioners. And then just review some of the emphasis that are that are listed under those initiatives. Once you get that, we will bring it back to have you adopted. And then I would be working with elected officials and department heads to help flesh out some of these things and bring them to you for for approval and, and at setting a priority for each of those departments to work towards. Uh, as we had talked about in the strategic retreat, not everything the county needs, needs to do or supposed to do needs to be encompassed in the strategic plan. However, this needs to be a high level directive initiative for providing staff and and the other elected officials an opportunity to look and see what the priorities of the Board of Commissioners are. And allow us to publicize that to our residents to make sure they understand what your emphasis is. And so I do appreciate the, the commission allowing us to do public outreach. It does add on a bit to the process, but that has been done. That's been cycled through even at the strategic retreat, that's been filtered a little bit more. And now it's just a frank conversation to say, how do we massage this final, the final draft into something that the Board of Commissioners can utilize? From here, we would have a final draft built and taken care of and ready for publish as well as having, you know, I say initiatives, but the initiatives are under the priorities, the initiatives flushed out by staff, or if there's any particular ones that you have that you'd like to see on, we'd love to have that input from you as well. So with that, I turn it over for discussion. And if we wanted just to go down through this and say, we're good with the mission statement, good with the vision statement, however, we'd like to do. Or if there is final input, that's what we're here to, to take care of today.
I, I was thinking we could just go through it as it's, you know, presented and I, I really like the mission and vision statements. I think they, they have been well done and I, I am good with those as they are. There's the values, I agree.
Too many.
Yes.
Um, and some to sort of
Yeah.
Take your first cut on this.
Well, I'm hesitant to say, oh, this one sucks, but. I mean, it depends on how many you want to go down to.
I, I do have a recommendation on that number.
I would say in between three and five. I mean, and, and dealing with some of the things that we've received from public input and even discussions there. I think three of them that we should, uh, we should incorporate is integrity, collaboration and transparency. I think those three resonate with some of the issues that we've dealt with over the last three years. And as well as makes it saying, this is our commitment to these. And this VOC and the previous ones were done a lot of work to try to do that. And whether it's recognized or not, we put those as banner standards of saying, this is how we're gonna, we're gonna proceed.
When we came up, we, we did come up with values to a certain degree in our, our work session with department heads. Did we come up with all of these?
No, this was kind of, uh, this was a compilation of some of the comments that Matt Dixon, as consultant, heard. So he just put those out there. Uh, like I said, these are all the scraps and I think we need to distill it to what your message really wants to be.
Yeah. I guess I was just trying to think of if there were values that we came up with during that work session. I think I would generally have more of a inclination towards those. Do we, do we have that as a summary? I think he said.
You know, collaboration, transparency were two of those.
Uh huh, yes.
That were really out there. Customer service was hinted at, adaptability, I don't recall that being one of those. Uh, I think that was an amalgamation of a couple of different emphasis that he provided. See.
I very much liked that, but typing in Matt and getting all of your stuff, Matt is making this more difficult.
It's a little bit tough with our search, yes.
I like the three that you identified.
Yeah.
I agree. Just for if we wanted to expand beyond that.
There was no recommendations on values from the, uh, the pack. Uh, I do have that. Not sure if I took pictures. Did not take pictures of that, of anything that shows values.
Okay, well then we didn't do it. So, uh, do we want to add anything beyond those, those three? I kind of like having adaptability, particularly given the, the general government environment that we exist in. Prioritizing the ability to make changes, but maybe that doesn't.
I know what you're saying, but is there different, is there a synonym for adaptability that for some reason I don't?
You don't love that as a value?
Yeah, that, that word doesn't seem as a value.
Put on our feet.
If that makes any sense.
Yeah, no, I, I, I hear what you're saying. But we should have a thesaurus available.
I'm on thesaurus.com.
Okay.
Versatile. I haven't really liked any of these.
I mean, I don't know if responsive might be a good. I mean, not, not saying we sway with the wind, but we're going to respond.
Flexible.
Flexible is a cinnamon for adaptable.
So who has an AIs? So it'd be adaptability as a value or another word for adaptability.
We, we all do on our computers. We have Microsoft Copilot. Right?
We don't allow that yet. It isn't, it isn't scored on yet.
Get it, I got it.
Never mind.
I got three of them online.
We don't.
Oh, we did.
Claude, Copilot. Crop, just gotta find him here. I'll use Claude.
Personal. Versatility.
Maybe we don't go with any of them.
So one of the things I guess about responsive, you could also pivot to me is that we, we will respond to something we aren't going to delay or, you know, we are.
Okay, Claude, flexibility, versatility, resilience, adjustability, pliability, malleability, agility, responsiveness and suppleness.
Supple.
Oh, and elasticity, elasticity. The best choice, and then Claude has to kick in there. The best choice depends on the context, flexibility and versatility. The most commonly used alternative is while resilience emphasis bouncing back and
I like resilient.
Agility suggests quick nimble adoption.
And word hippo gives a hundred and twenty seven of them, the last two I just have to share with you. Plural potentiality. And then the other one is whippiness. I think whippiness is a great value. Two Ps for, I don't know what that word is. Whippy, that's W H I P P I in a word.
I don't believe it.
I know, I, well, I've never heard of plural potentiality either, but I'm gonna start using it.
Right, absolutely. We have to explore the plural potentiality of our options.
Exactly.
Oh my gosh, wow, you sound so smart. Um, I actually like resilient.
Dave.
Yeah, I would go with that. I mean, what, what do you like to, you like resilient?
It'd be okay. I, I will say that resiliency seems like a buzzword of the last few years.
Well, everything we're gonna pick, it's gonna be hard to pick something that's not a buzzword. We're gonna have to pick something like plural potentiality. That's not a buzzword, we could start a trend. The new thing is adaptability, it's plural potentiality.
Really, resilience and adaptability sound like two totally different things to me.
But I think adaptability would be a component of resiliency, which is part of what I like. You know, if you're gonna be resilient, you gotta be able to, you have another choice, Dave.
Yeah, I have a, you notice that. I guess I got to pick one of these.
And pick something totally different.
Do you like resiliency?
It's okay.
Okay. I'll go with resilience. I can't come up with a better.
Sorry about that.
Resiliency, integrity, collaboration and transparency.
I feel good about that. That's worth it.
All right. I like that. Okay, strategic priorities, and I hear there might be some wordsmithing or massaging on this. We, uh, we, they had boiled it down to five different strategic priorities in our strategic retreat. The, the the pack had given us seven, but we consolidated down to five. Community and economic development, governance, infrastructure, water and employment. I'm, I'm really happy with that general list. I don't think we could reasonably add more.
No.
The one I think we had heard a little bit at the strategic retreat was the first one, community and economic development. Whether we include the economic development or solely focus on community development for roles for county port and whatnot. I mean, we have a role in economic development. And so keeping that in there is great, but that is one, one thing that I've heard over the last year as we develop this is proper roles in the county with economic development. If we put this here, does that provide, are we, are we really venturing in there? Or is it community development that we're looking at? So that's just one that I would throw out for VOC.
So most of you probably heard me say this before, the counties, my view, the county's role in economic development is creating policies and procedures. It's conducive to businesses looking here.
And, and that is economic.
Well, it is, but other people are gonna view that as that we need to hire somebody or we need to, you know, go lure somebody else, you know? No, my view is that we provide the environment that's conducive to them. And that's by having policies and upper burdens and regulations. There are now barriers to development. That's, that's my view of the county's role in this.
My, my comment to that, Jeff, would be, uh, I, I agree to a large extent. Except for we live in the state of Oregon and the state of Oregon makes it extremely difficult. And if we can do things to help people, you know, get through those burdensome things, then I think, you know, that would be something that might be worth, you know, hiring somebody to say, hey, let's help, you know, people get through this mire that Oregon has made. So, but I think we're in general agreement of we do have at least a role to play.
I, I've seen, I've seen economic development people. I mean, there's so much right now with really professional. You know, like the Port of Marl. I mean, they, they're geared to do that, you know? They have the staff, they have the knowledge. And you got WIP, then you got, uh, I can't remember. Jeff is, uh, community facilitate economic. I don't know that is, but I need to height. I, I don't think it's the county's role for economic development. I think we're good, if we do something like that, we're getting into an area that we have no background, we have no mandate. We don't have the experience, tools, blah, blah, blah. And you got it all around you. Somebody already doing it. That's my thought. So if there, another way to word economic development to we won't stand in the way.
So you and I are basically on the same page.
Yes. Yeah.
I mean, definitely some of these, some of these tasks, not economic development, but we're definitely not looking to get a promoter to go out and lure businesses here. That's not, that's not what we're looking to do. But, um, I mean, and in community development, we will be building economic opportunities for the cities and the unincorporated areas that we're, that we're looking at. So that, that's, that's why I bring this one up.
And, and as someone who lives in an unincorporated area, the county is functionally my city government. And so there isn't any economic development group for nobody, uh, but despite the fact that nobody, uh, actually is the second largest community in Marl County. After Boardman, the second largest group of people are people who live in unincorporated areas. So I think
They have economic development, they have windmills, they have solar farms. I mean, it's coming in without any, you know, the county having to put, hire somebody who, they're, they're not gonna make more solar farms come in and, and service the unincorporated areas. They're doing, unincorporated areas are doing pretty good on it. We got, they got a lot of options.
And yet, at the same time, the county takes the lead on those discussions.
No, we don't.
For wind and solar?
We don't attract those here.
Oh, we don't, we don't actively.
We don't stand in their way.
Yeah, I guess I'm not.
You could stop all of that right now. Somebody says, you could stop all the wind, all the solar, just don't give them the tax breaks.
That's true.
And the county doesn't control the CRES. But the CRES isn't really gonna incorporate well a little bit, but the SIP and the pilot are the two ones. If you just said, no more, we're not giving any more tax credits to wind or solar. It wouldn't be here. There were, you wouldn't have one more here. So they'd be in other counties, other places.
So, I mean, that actually sort of gets to my point of, of we do have a role there. That is something that we are involved in.
Not getting in people's way, you know? Well, okay, I, I see what you mean, but we don't need to do anything more to accomplish that. All we have to do is sit down and tell them, yeah. I mean, in the pilot program, it's already set in stone through state law. You just go and argue with them that to pay sixteen dollars for weed control. Other than that, it's seven thousand dollars a megawatt, you know? And the SIP, you know, that's a little bit of negotiation there. Like we'll see coming up on this wind farm, but other, it's it's minimal, you know? I mean, we don't go out and recruit wind farms.
And more solar. Don't throw up our books, make it more conducive to them. But that's policy that's said by us, so. So some of this, you know, would be like when we decided to throw out, you know, help. It's something that we're going to continue to do. Is it a strategic priority, a strategic mission for us to do or is it just something that we're going to continue to do?
You know, I, for all of what I just said, I think I would actually be okay with just saying community development, because I think economic is, is part of that, you know, you can't really develop a community without economic component. Just takes it from a heavy emphasis on the contracting and recruiting businesses and just saying, we're gonna do what's best to grow our communities and prepare them for success.
Leave it as it is and I'm sensing Dave and I'd be in favor of striking economic.
But I've seen it tried and I just, we already have enough of it. I don't think there's anything that Kelly can add to to accomplish, I don't, I don't see any dips in the county.
We have three.
But, you know, we could spend some more money and hire somebody.
We have three of the fastest shrinking towns in the state of Oregon. So I, I would argue we absolutely do not have enough of it and we're probably not close.
But, but you hire something, I've seen people hire a guy and he, it's, it's just, it's not easy. Economic development is not easy.
Oh, yeah.
After the mill closed down, I tried it personally. Our WIP, and I personally called people from the Bay Area trying to recruit into the mill. And I must have made, and it was all volunteer. I spent a lot of money on phone calls. We did mailers, all that. It is very, very hard. And it's not. And I saw, I've seen that they had a state economic guy to come around. He never produced one job.
So at one point the county did hire somebody.
They did, and you know what happened to them? They got co-op and sent it to Salem, right up to the mill shutdown. County did a study, they paid forty, forty thousand dollars in nineteen ninety nine to find the SIP codes that'll fit in to go after, to fit in the closed down mill site. I remember those. Twelve of them, and concentrated on those. But, but they spent forty grand on that study. That was forty thousand dollars in nineteen ninety nine money. And I, I've just seen, people think economic development is easy. It ain't easy. I know from personal experience. And you look at the Port of Marl, it's countywide. If you want to get economic development, go talk to your board members and say, hey, you know, hey, you, you got the economic development tools, the background, the experience, the personnel. You guys come in here, you do something. See, cause they're all set up for it. That's their, that is their mission. And our mission has, has never been economic development. And we're, we'd be trying to develop something that is just not in our culture to me. But I, I mean, I still, I, I agree with, don't get in their way. Are we doing something, and I think there's some of that going around now that is to, to do more to make it easier for, to do economic development.
So I think we should do like a mini vote. I think I want to keep it. What do you guys think?
Mini voter or full vote? Is a mini vote just one person?
Good idea. All right, I call for a mini vote. I vote first.
Now we're good.
Well, we're in a
Now we're in a decent county government here.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And, and while we're in a works, you know, no final determination will be made, but you can come to a consensus to give me direction to get a final.
Well, what I'm saying is, I don't, we don't need to keep beating around the bush. Let's just, yes. So if you got, what, what do you guys want?
No. Oh.
No, no, I, remove economic.
So it's community development with a small economic emphasis underneath, but it's just community development.
Yeah.
No, small, no, small, no. It's, it's community development.
There you go.
Well, I guess you have one vote, I mean, how big is that?
Many.
That's nine point, seven point type.
There you go. Okay, um, so I'd like to just go through the strategic priorities and then we'll just look at some of the initiatives to see if they stick. And one thing I do realize, I mean, all three of you participated in that strategic retreat. And mostly you allowed a lot of input from the other elected officials and the, and the staff. And I appreciate that, because it would have been easy for you to sit up as the underground gorillas in the room and say, this is what we're gonna do. So I do appreciate the fact that you allowed that input in that direction. Um, I had invited several of the, uh, department heads and elected officials come in, but I guess they're trusting you, so.
Who always participate?
Yeah, right now it's just Lisa Mittelstorf and the other one, the MC presentation is me, just in case I need to throw it out.
So Lisa's on there.
Yeah. So, um, the second, um, general or strategic priority is governance. Just making sure that one word description fits what your direction is.
We workshop that quite a bit at the, at the work session and I think that's a good word for it.
Any other discussion on that? Right, the other one is infrastructure. Solid emphasis on infrastructure.
Yeah.
Water, I'll tell you the one thing, and I do have a question on this, is water is all encompassing? Is this a, is this a initiative or priority on water? Or is it the drinking water issue? And that's, that's what I just asked for clarification. If you feel like water is sufficient enough, I'm fine. Or if we just need clarification as we publish this, I, I just want to make sure it conveys what you, your interests are.
I, I like it personally as water, um, because while we certainly have drinking water as an issue, it's not the only water issue in the county. And, you know, as we are looking at scenarios where we've got aquifers that are declining, um, that's, that's, that's another big issue. That I think even if we didn't have nitrates, would be something that might end up as a priority on the list. That's my thought.
Water's good?
I'm good with it.
Yeah.
I think that the emphasis right now is definitely drinking water.
Yeah.
And that, to your point, I understand that the ideas of, you know, declining groundwater and on certain projects, you know, they come forward, you know, definitely entertaining. So I don't know if anybody else has heard of, I understand that, uh, JR Cook with Nawa and Lift Band and some other people are looking at maybe doing something to get more water out of the Columbia. Really? And bypassing the state of Oregon now, how well that will work, I don't know.
I, I don't think it will, but I guess maybe wish them luck, you know, if we use
I, I'm with you.
If, if we use the same percentage as Washington did of the Columbia River, you know, how much that would transform Eastern Europe? It would be absolutely incredible.
Yeah, one time you told that trick, this was about two thousand five, two thousand six, had what they called the Oasis Project. We were trying to get a extra hundred thousand acre feet out of the river above the Dallas Dam. So it wasn't just, is anywhere above the Dallas Dam, Oregon, get another hundred thousand acre feet out? If I remember right, it was like point zero one percent of the flows past the Dallas Dam. And the state, the tribes came out against it. And all the example that somebody gave one time is that, had a glass of water and they said, you know, what we were asking for is measurable. That stick your finger in this glass of water and pull out, there's less water in there, but it's not measurable. And that's the analogy that I use for with the hundred thousand acre feet.
So I think, yeah, that's Yeah, living, living along the Colorado River, totally understand the idea of not taking too much, since it never hits the sea. Columbia River's not the Colorado for sure.
So we're not selling it to California.
Yeah, that's true. All right.
Although they do have their eye on it.
Big old pipeline.
Yeah.
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 For, for years.
I mean, there have, yes, that, that was an objective.
Just to, just to check on this, um, I would say with the, with the first four that are, that are done, uh, I always list employees last, not to say they're last, but, uh, Uh, I always list employees last, not to say they're last, but, uh, uh, you know, realizing that there's strategic. Uh, public impacting items, is there any preference on an order of these, or is this? Is this fine, it's kind of listed as alphabetical order, which I'm fine with, but if there's, if you want to prioritize in order. Be happy to, to work on that as well. Okay. All right, so as we look at this next part, um, Matt Dixon provided. A few, um, initiatives under each of these that are, that are set up. Uh, these were from our strategic retreat. And I just wanna go through with the commission to see if there's any, any that strike true, that need to be de-emphasized or stricken. Um, as, as we go through that, just to make sure we're on the, um, on the, on the right path as I give direction to staff. Uh, so community development now, um, we have six listed there. We have expand, uh, contributions to tourism. Uh, increase support to cities for infrastructure and community development, increase workforce housing. Improve access to tax deferrals, pilot and grants. Validate impacts of existing economic development programs and increase the number of businesses in Marl County.
One thing I would like to do when I was listening to all this and everything is, when we say support. Uh, is it right to assume that means financial support?
Um, generally financial or even is some staff support as we look at it. I mean, um, particularly smaller cities down south, I mean. Lexington missed out on the local option tax because I, they just forgot to do that. And there might be something of just saying, elected officials, make sure we, we give them a little note on that. While they are an elected governing body themselves, they have minimal staff. Uh, or even if they were to look at applying for a grant, maybe. Um, allowing one of our grant writers to go down and support them as, as a courtesy to help improve the community there without them. Uh, putting out, uh, monies directly.
And so, not to pick on Lexington any more than that, but their zoning could use some help.
And not to go in and heavy footed, that kinda thing, but, um.
And I, I've been to a lot of Lexington councils, in fact, I helped set up, um. Sam, when he bought that school, and we vacated the street, and I helped him got it, get his own park commercial and, and. Uh, was it Tamra or Carla, one of them came and helped, they donated, that was very helpful. Cause they have the expertise, so I like that part, but I wanna be careful with support. And, and we talked about, just like we kinda talked about in our, in our regular meeting, when we say, well, we wanna support, if that means money. I wanna know who, where you're gonna take that, because everybody, a lot of times people say, well, we need to give more money to this, well. If, if, if you give it, if you take money to give to here, it has to come from somewhere. So I think it needs to be identified, who's gonna lose over here? Whether, and it may not be a who, a person, but if you keep dipping into the capital improvement plan, that means certain buildings aren't gonna get built. Certain facilities aren't gonna be kept up, and that's when I think that should be matched up. Anytime anybody goes, says, the county needs to give more support, quote, economic support, our money. That we need to, I say, where's that, who's gonna take the hit over here?
Yeah.
To do that, because we're shifting money, we're not printing. And, but it's important, staff support. But is, to me, I've always thought it's a good thing, you know, and like what you just said, grant writing, planning. These small, the communities and stuff, they don't have that, we do. And I've always thought, and the things that Kevin does too, with his, when he keeps track of people's grants and so forth. That's a service that smaller places are smaller, they just, it, it overwhelms them, you know? So those are the areas that I think we can be a real help.
So I'm on. I'm, uh, no, sorry to interrupt you, Dave.
We, we have, if you look at, we have expertise in that, we have expertise in planning, we have expertise in grant handling. We have expertise in, in grant writing, you know? And can we, can we lend some of those to smaller s- uh, communities? And, and help them out that way, you know?
I'm on the same page with you there, Dave, but I think that, uh, lending personnel support, you know, I mean, there is a cost to the county. Because.
There is.
But it, to me, when we do that, and I'll call it an in-kind contribution. As opposed to an out of our pocket contribution, I'm a lot more in favor of that, is because the out of the pocket. The county has all kinds of obligations and things that we need to fix, our house isn't completely fixed and in order. And we need to concentrate on ourselves, you know, we don't have, despite what.
How did you know that my kitchen sink is Borg?
You know, despite what most of the, I'm not gonna say most, a lot of residents in the county think, the county isn't just bubbling over with money. Like Dave says, we aren't printing, we have a finite amount, and we have lots of things that through, you know. Whatever circumstances haven't been taken care of through the prioritization, like funds, whatever the reason was. The county needs to get those things taken care of first, we don't have excess money, despite what I think some people think.
Just to, to hop in on that, I think we could, um. To, to address some of the concerns about, uh, money, I think one point two, maybe one point five. Validate impacts of existing economic development programs, um, I think maybe we could expand that to. Uh, validate impacts of county support programs where, you know, if we are. You know, whether it is through a, you know, passing money on to WICFID, or if we are offering in-kind support. Through the planning department, you know, we should have some kind of measurement for those impacts. Um, and that might be a way to address, you know. More than just economic development programs, let's make that a standard for whenever we're supporting things.
But that, I just put a slash county support programs on there.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, one, one that catches my eye, and I, I, I have. I love our parks and some of our, uh, tourism things, I don't like the term expand contributions to tourism. Um, I would like to expand tourism options, whether that's through looking at other. Uh, sources of revenue or grant things to help continue to build, uh, some of the, some of the things there. Uh, expand contributions to tourism kinda makes me think we're just opening up the general funds and pouring more money that way.
I mean, and that's actually like, that's the, that's the limit, that's, I don't think you can interpret that a different way, I don't know what else that would mean.
And so, so could I just, you, could I, um, just throw out, say, maybe expand tourism? Options or funding options or, you know, um, expand tourism investments. Uh, as an, as, rather than contributions to tour.
So the last one, I think, was, goes back to what Gus just says, the only way to interpret is that, it's wanting more money.
Or we could just say expand tourism and let the staff come up with some ideas on that, where it's like, you know, one. I, you, just to throw out an idea, one of them is, you know, figuring out if we can get, um, UTVs and ATVs on, on to. To the state roads to connect our parks, um, the cost on that is signage and education. And, you know, you know, those types of things, I'm a hundred percent in favor of, you know, because the, the out of pocket is nominal. In support of, you know, one of the things that, yes, in my mind falls underneath this somehow. Is supporting the Heritage Trail along the river here.
You know.
And, um, you know, but on that is, it's going out and looking for the grants and other funding up. Sources to fund the bulk of it and understanding that, you know, we'll have staff time and some different things and push comes to shove, we'll probably have some. Matching fund contribution at some point.
But, what, yeah. What about instead of expand contributions to tourism, we just scratch that line out and move increased parks and recreation opportunities into that?
Sure, cause it covered what Matt had said about.
I, I think that's. For me in particular, uh, I, I would love to expand tourism, but where I. I don't anticipate that we're going to see a whole lot of tourism dollars if the general economy isn't doing super well. Then, you know, what if we're looking at, how can we increase recreational opportunities for people who live in Marl County?
Cause.
That's true. Cause even if we just expanded folks who are using what we have, who already live here. It, we're already under utilizing what we've got, so that, that's my thought.
I'm good with that, which, not just tourism, local enjoyment and.
Yeah.
Out of towners.
Yeah.
Be happy to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just looking at nods.
All right, so one point one, one point one one becomes one point one, okay? Did any other comment on community development?
What does increase workforce housing really mean, what's the county's role in that? So what would we be doing?
One of the things they threw out was that county housing plan, which I'm not totally, uh.
Didn't we do, didn't the county have one done within the last five years?
That I couldn't answer on. Um, but.
Can I give you direction somewhere?
Might be the wrong place, I, I'm, I'm looking for Gabby and Dr. Clark.
Right, that door over to the right.
To the right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
You're good. Um, this would be, and this would be the tough one, because like, as was discussed at strategic retreat, you know. Two acre lots is not gonna solve the housing issue here. However, working with cities to, to champion, you know, systems that might allow them to go, go, go smaller lots. Or, uh, improve housing or just partnering with them, and it may be not, not so much going in and funding those things. Just standing behind them and supporting them on, on their directions to do so. And whether that's advocating at the legislature, uh, supporting some of the meetings as commissioners, saying, yes, this is important. And just helping rattle the chains for to, to help overcome obstacles that some of them face, whether it's UGB expansion or realignment. Uh, those kind of other things.
How to properly use what you've already got in your UGB.
It's true, um, I was, uh, I ran into a couple of developers yesterday. Uh, it was just by random chance, and they were talking about wanting to expand their footprint in Marl County and, uh. That, one of the difficult things is that you have to get a base established. You know, cause currently a lot of our builders come from tricities and getting to that point, um, and once they're. They're in, once there's an actual footprint, then they can expand beyond just being right on the river. And, uh, you know, I don't know what role we could play in trying to attract them, but we could, you know, at the very least. You know, try to lobby on, on their behalf and maybe work with the port or work with legislation to try to get. Um, get those folks here, uh, when I had a talk with Senator Nash. Was it two days ago, was it yesterday?
It's Monday.
It was Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was two, two days ago, um, he brought up, uh, a previous Senate bill. That was, uh, fifty acres that had, uh, five units per acre. That would have been strictly in EFU zones, but, you know, there were a lot of conditions around that. And that's something that could, you know, put a dent in addressing workforce housing. Where we, we play a role in trying to help get that on the ground, but we certainly weren't, not gonna build it. I don't, I don't see any scenario for that.
Again, I, I see it as more of support for cities and advocating policies that might allow. Uh, other people to, or developers or other interested parties to take. I mean, I've, I've attended the, the, uh, the workforce housing initiatives that Boardman's really been pushing and. It's there to support, I'm not coming with answers, um, it's just this support that we're. We know it impacts the county and we'd love to see something come along with it.
Well, I mean, I was involved with the WICFID, and they bought three, they built three brand complexes. I was a treasurer, and everyone can talk about, oh, you know, what's it cost, what's it cost, I went through and did a spreadsheet, I knew it. I know exactly what it costs to build those, from the day that they put, they started doing the inspections. To the day they put up that sign, it says, I know everything, all about it, and I know how much of a hit we took when we sold it. But that was the goal, to, we knew we were gonna take a hit, but we did not wanna be landowners. The WICFID, I, I had always wished they'd do that again and replicate, cause I thought that was one of their biggest success. They've done a lot of rehab, and I'm not saying the county should get into that at all. But that was, i- is there a way you could. Uh, make more land, but because you, you, you've seen it yourself, Matt, they're scrambling to find a place to put a daycare center.
Yeah.
How are you gonna have people, young people move here with kids if they can't send it against the daycare?
Exactly.
I mean, uh, you know, can we, and I think Tamra, in one time she looked at. Uh, changing the zoning, see, we have a different zoning, but here again, it makes it doggone hard, uh, around our city, I think. You guys have a, have a more liberal zoning that was set up years and years ago.
Well, because there's, you know, surrounding Hepner, best of mine are saying, most of the TFU ground, that's not within the city limits. At TFU ground where, I'm not lying.
That was the mistake, when that initial.
Yeah.
Uh, rural residential was put in, Boardman and Irigan both got that, and it was overlooked to. Put that anywhere else because surrounding Hepner.
Exactly.
This, this is gonna sound like the work session, some of that is not farm ground, I know what it's zoned as, but it's not.
No, notice the decisions that were made with Senate Bill seventy-five.
And I think, I think Tamra looked into it once, is there a way to correct that quote mistake from years ago?
And it's. You know? Taken a gold three exception and both eleven and fourteen exceptions.
Yeah, so that's only three out of nineteen?
Or like fourteen that apply to Marl County?
Uh huh, yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, that's, that's something if we were to do it as staff and consulting and saying, we're gonna go to bat for. Hepner or Lexington and say, here, here's where, we're gonna help you get through these exceptions.
That's, we're putting our emphasis on housing and we're, we're helping them get the property zone, so you can build on it. We're not gonna build.
Yeah, yeah, if, if Boardman or Irigan wants to redistribute their UGB with the idea of creating more housing, then. Us as the county with this priority would say, we're here for you.
That's in our strategic plan to help you, yeah, and not give it away.
Probably run into an experiment in GP though, I think, is that the landlords have to be willing to.
Oh, oh, yes, but. That, we, we will play the part we can play.
Yeah, but you know, you also, you have to look at, I own put in two Emmer divisions. And there, a bunch of people just got together and they go, if we wanna keep our school and our town going, any place for people to live. We put in one, bang, filled up, put in two. Come on, I mean, you guys are the kind of, down there, they, they just go get stuff done, you know? And it, it, you know, is there, is there a lesson in there that the county could get? You know, how, how did they manage that, get some hints from, you know, how did they, how were, I'm sure that would.
All that were unimportant.
So you, you do it and then ask forgiveness later?
But no, the UGB was ridiculously large, and it's still actually for I own, I don't know how that ever happened. Cause it still has potential for.
That would have allowed, uh, one or two to go in there.
Yeah, and there's potential for, for another one, cause it's just.
Yeah, and then UGB.
Yeah, UGB is large enough.
We, hopefully make it be just there for Hepner and. The county, and we have the expertise and we have, that's our, that's up our, uh, our alleyway.
You know. Okay, uh, move on to governance?
Yeah.
Okay. Number one, increase residential satisfaction with safety and security. Um, improve access to information systems and services, increase healthy community engagement, improve public perception and trust. Increase collaboration throughout the county. Now, a lot of these could be construed as feel-good initiatives, but I believe that there are some specific subtasks on there that could help. It, my one question is, I know we put safety and security to remove, uh, another, um, strategic priority there. I, you know, customers or, uh, resident surveys would be huge to both. Gauge the satisfaction of safety and security as well as just operations of the county and overall. gauge the satisfaction of safety and security as well as just operations of the county overall. But those kind of things are there. Any questions on those, those initiatives under that that priority?
I don't, I don't think so. I I agree that they are soft. But there are things that we ought to pursue and then having good subtasks underneath makes that a lot better.
Any other comments? Infrastructure. I'll just turn this over to Jeff. We've got several initiatives on this one.
Jeff, your voice sounds different.
Yeah, exactly. Improve optimized county facilities. This is the huge emphasis that we're working on with capital improvement plan, of course. Improve access to healthcare, improve regional transportation infrastructure and improve shared resources with cities and districts. Questions, modifications, massage?
To improving access to healthcare. Yes, so what do we see is that? What what's what's the action underneath that?
I think that was an echo from a lot of the the citizens outreach that we did with this early on. There is a healthcare aspect with, you know, things like Planned Parenthood vaccinations that we do with our public health department. But I think by and large, it's gonna read as we're gonna make sure you have access to a hospital or other critical care.
And I'm always looking at what is the county's role? What what is the county going to do to facilitate this? I guess is what.
Yeah, like I I I think we could act in a role of trying to facilitate, you know, between various groups. But I am extremely concerned about the idea that, you know, we're gonna keep, you know, a hospital open. If the federal government decides to shut off all of the money and quite frankly, it looks like they have. I don't know how much we can pick up that slack.
Cause there's a taxing district in our county that's runs and make charge of that. So is it our role to step in?
Technically, if I go under, I think it it then becomes ours, but.
I think that, you know, the providing our public health services.
Yeah.
We continue to provide those the best that we can with the funding that we have, but you know, as he's pointed out earlier today, that, you know, we may lose half a million dollars. Providing those services.
Should we change, improve access to healthcare to maintain access to healthcare? I mean, honest, it it does, but that feels like more realistic about what the situation at large is. And that that would be a commitment to, we will try to do what we can to maintain public access to public health.
Yeah.
And, you know, groups like CHIP would probably have some tasks that we'd tie in on this and that, but that that is a little bit of a trigger point. Improve access to healthcare. And, you know, do, does the B O C want that on there or maintain access to healthcare and the associated? You know.
Baggage amendments that are there, yeah.
Well, you know, we could go back to what we've been talking about. How do we not get in the way or I know the loop helps people get healthcare.
We've increased ridership on medical comp, medical drives.
They're very, you know, I mean, that gives people to.
To improve the access.
You know, I mean, and if we're going to put some kind of effort and resources and I mean, but my resources, I mean, if you're gonna put dollars, tell us where who's getting it's who's pocket is coming out of. But if we if we get more grants for the loop to give better individual service to purchase doctors or whatever. That's up our alleyway, see? We're not getting out of our lane. You're doing what we go, what we know how to do.
Well, access is not.
I I I I mean, I would, I could put what I just described under access.
Yeah.
I I just, I'm I'm wary of words like support.
Yeah.
And expand contributions. See, that's what, that's what I'm wary of and I'm not totally against it. I just wanna know who's gonna take the hit when we do it, because it's not a level of
You know.
A cookie jar if you pulling them out of the, somebody, okay.
And and at the same time, staff would use this to say, hey, we are doing this. And so this other project is going to be de-emphasized, cause it's not on this list.
Exactly.
If it's not mission critical, so that
Exactly.
And and that will be come about during the budget process, so you'll still have a chance to see.
That should be a constant thing in this county, because it's one of our things, flexibility, adaptability.
We said resilience.
Resilience.
Maybe we should go back to that ability.
I did it, you guys said no, so.
See, that's, to me, that's adaptability. It is, you put your resources in the best place they're needed. You know, just because you did something for twenty-five years, doesn't mean it 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 should keep doing that, you know, I mean, if if people really need a lot of loop, and we've done pretty good with loop as far as grants. I mean, it's total granted.
Yeah.
Up until Ben dropped the ball on us.
Well.
Did we ever recover from that?
Uh we've just reallocated services and kept things keeping down.
There's no way to ever get back in?
There is, and we're gonna be working on that, hopefully getting back in, but it's a it's a biennium process, and so we've gotta get ready for the next. So we will not have any of those kind of grant funds until twenty twenty seven, potentially, July twenty twenty-seven, is when the next time those grants would come through. I've tasked him with saying, let's be ready to have a really
Number of these things. Tourism, what built the O H V park? Not county money.
No.
The state wanted a place for people to go and do their, and so we we went, we were adaptable.
I'm the one that didn't like the word adaptability.
And no, we were adaptable and we jumped on it and I remember the county, I mean, there was ranches that were totally against that. The initial meeting down at the Catholic church, they were screaming at Mark O'Brien. It turned into a total. I mean, the place was full of people, but don't you put that thing in here? And they persisted, the county, and now it's a real asset for this county, I think.
If I, if you, just as a little side story, our current concessionaires up there were, they hated the idea when they were young that it was being turned into an A O H V. Cause they used to run cattle up there and hunt up there. And now they are, they are concessioneered up there and love it. So.
Yeah, no.
Kind of fun things.
And if we, if if we stay nimble on our feet and 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 keep from the lookout, we can contribute what we're strong at. And you know, it's, I'm I'm not sure what, is Nick, is he on retainer with the county?
He is like, signed up as a grant writer for the county.
Yeah.
So we do have him on a task ordered basis.
That's, yeah, okay, see, I mean, he could have, he could, to me, there's one of the guys, the person that that could help. See that where the county could help out is is have an expert like him where a a small entity or something or will have the 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 funds or the knowledge to go find a guy like that, so.
Yeah.
Contribute what we do best, which is finance, management, grants, things like that. We're 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 pretty good at that.
Definitely.
You know.
So I think with Dave's comments that maybe improve access to healthcare, because we were specifically focusing, if we're focused focusing on what can we do to help facilitate people being able to get there, then I think that 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 gives us a good spot.
Okay, stick with that. We don't change it. Improve access to healthcare. And then we fleshed that out with several tasks, including uh public transit, other types of things, our public health department and such. Okay. Any other items on infrastructure for discussion?
Okay. Go to water. We have three items on there. Improve access to clean water in nitrate areas, ensure long-term water supply sustainability and improve wastewater system.
Should that be improved wastewater systems?
Yeah. And that specifically targets unincorporated areas, probably around Boardman and Aragon and specifically Lexington. In I own, I mean, and this again would be not necessarily writing a check for it, but coming in and saying we can help support your dirth, have help and that.
Lexington has had so many opportunities if they had been able to get all of their ducks in a row.
They are, and that's that's, and that would be a great thing of getting a good grant writer and and grant administrator to help. You know, say, we'll pocket this to get this, and here's a few things you have to do where they're so if they're willing to accept it.
Well, I think there's a trick. I mean, I I was down there many times when they were, they recalled the mayor and they was yelling and screaming. The council things looked like ours for a while. And I mean, you know, it was a mess, you know, and then they kinda got straight down. Got some people in council now, they're full of nothing. They got their own little economic development group with some money from work that, you know? They kinda got a strategic plan together. I I see some daylight down there and
They're making some change.
An opportunity for the county to assist in certain ways, you know, maybe planning, maybe a help with grant writing, management, you know, financial, something, I don't know.
Yeah.
That's that's what I keep going back to, because I think that's our strength.
Alright. So when I see improved wastewater system, you know, like what comes to my mind is what wastewater system is the county own?
You know? So we could say assist community water system development, uh wastewater system.
So let's just go back up to the community development, one point two, increase support to cities for infrastructure and community development.
I think it would, but we're specifically calling it out here in water of, you know, this is something that is a priority. But this this gets to our our discussion when we were having that that the the larger work session of could we consolidate all of the water things into one category rather than having them split up everywhere?
Can we assist with I own's new wastewater system at all or do they do that?
No, they pretty much did the heavy lift. I don't, I haven't done anything on it.
Okay, I just wondered if there was something.
I'm not sure if the port contributed to it. I think that the port did some digging or some dirt work or something.
The the port has done some, but it they've done more in terms of the school project.
So four point three, keep it underwater. I mean, it does say wastewater. Or do we put that under one point O as a task under one point two?
Keep it underwater, but not underwater, but.
In the water category.
In the water category. Thank you. That's a good way to say it. Employees. Improve efforts to develop county's workforce, increase employee satisfaction engagement, improve recruitment processes, reduce turnover, improve retention. I don't know where it would fit under this. Maybe it would fit under five point one. I was, I was having a conversation with Vince of, you know, what could we do if we're looking long term to get people earlier in their careers as it might be, and then develop them into the people that we know we're gonna need? And I think it would be really great if we partnered with schools. You know, the port has got a program for giving high schoolers the opportunity to go work in jobs they might be interested in. Uh I think it would be awesome if we mimic that and then maybe we've got a shot at recruiting somebody while they're young and getting, hey, did you know that this is an opportunity? Ironically, I'm in county government now, but it's certainly not something I thought was an option in high school. Any other comments on those?
One thing I might tag on him, if you think of something, so that I wonder if there's a percentage of our workforce that was kind of runaway from high school here as opposed to that we are having to recruit from outside the area, you know?
That would be an interesting survey to do.
Because would you go up, talk to the seniors? You know, hey, you could have.
Cause I I know right now, you know, I'm I'm pretty involved with youth in a whole lot of categories and that there has been a huge shift from college to what is the quickest route I can get to a career? And if we can help fill that role in saying, hey, we'll we'll take you on, this is the path for you to have a good career with the county, I I think that long term would pay off for the county.
Well, and I've had thoughts with the, like the A P clerk. It's like the per, high school graduation is always required. We should be having a little bit of a job fair saying, if you wanna, if you wanna join the roads crew, if you wanna go be a deputy, you know, I might, there's a few things.
Would internship be anywhere possible for the county or is that just?
Good. It would be an allotment of money or working with things. Lisa just raised her hand. Can I have her?
Yes, absolutely. Since she's specifically involved in that.
She's gonna tell us how it's gonna be a great idea and we should do it.
And I've got it, so you can start your video as well, Lisa, if you'd like.
Okay, I I tried to sit really quiet and just listen, but now I had to raise my hand, I'm sorry. I don't really wanna butt into your meeting. I'm enjoying your meeting, by the way. We are doing this and I would love to have Anna Brown, our workforce development director, come and make a presentation to you about the project that she has, not only for high school internships, but for college internships and the tracking that she is doing on kids that go from camp in fifth and sixth grade all the way through college into the workforce. So if you'd like, I'd be happy to have her come give, you know, a fifteen minute presentation to county. Yes, it's been a great program. She she puts people in jobs all over the county, so absolutely Marl County could participate in that.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, we would like to, we would very much like to have her.
So the middle of next month's work, Lisa?
It, yes, yeah, as as long as she's available, um pick a day. I know she's got a couple of conferences that she's doing as well as the infrastructure summit, but I'm sure she'd be happy to and we're putting, I think, sixty, between sixty and seventy-one high school students to work this fall for the school year, so.
That that's such a massive opportunity if we could also tap into that.
So September seventeen, Lisa?
Okay, I'll, I will find out if that works for her. Um and also the Columbia Works Program is the college program that brings not only local students into jobs here, but occasionally brings people from outside because this is, might be an only area where they can get some great experience in agro business and then, you know, hope that some of them will actually wanna stay here and go to work and live in our communities.
Absolutely.
So I know currently the only department that's really taking a major advantage of that is planning. Tamers utilized and has a regular stream of interns. In fact, the one, I can't remember her name. Uh she did the work on the Heritage Trail sign process and actually came and did a presentation to the B O C a year and a half ago and you know, there's there's some great things, but we've only really seen it effective with with planning so far. I think Tamers is very fixed the initiative on that and if we could expand that to others, that'd be, I mean, we only get them for for a couple of months and that, but you know, there's menial things and stuff that needs to get done that an intern can learn.
And I, you know, I had them at the newspaper office and I had a couple of several years, three or four years had interns. And you you know, you have to be committed to it, but it was a good experience. It was very good. And, you know, I I really enjoyed doing that. And I mean, none of them were ended up working for us. But that wasn't in my, that to me, that wasn't the point, but. And I mean, none of them were, were, ended up working for us, but that wasn't in my, that, to me, that wasn't the point, but. And the other thing it did, Lisa and the guys is, it gave, it gives them the knowledge of working in a. Office, at least in my, I mean, the other intern that's out working with the roads or something that they be, they get used to working around. Equipment or whatever, but in our environment, it was, they got used to the office culture, the office environment. How do you treat employees? How do you uh, formally answer the phone? These are things that, that maybe. We take it for granted, but they might not know that, but I think helps them in, in any office job they go to. You know, just how do you, how do you function? How do you dress? You know? And I had to tell a few of them, yeah, no, you sit, I'm out here in front. And, you know, you interact with the customers, you gotta go, and, and it wasn't a super dress code, just uh. You know, look a little nicer. You're meeting the public for a distance, that type of thing, you know, anyway.
No, it's been a really good program and I believe, um, it was Valerie, maybe or Anna, Lisa that was at. The county and uh, we got her at the Sage Center this year, so that's been uh, great for us. But yeah, take advantage of it. It's, it's a good program.
So, tell us it was a good idea.
Yeah, and that's one thing that we're open, um, I mean, Lindsay was considering it sometimes. I mean, that's one reason why we got the. Uh, part-time uh, H R assistant in here to help flesh out some of those things and expand our resources, so.
Stuff, staff has to buy into this.
Oh, yeah.
You know, there's no way you could do it, you know?
You can't just put them and say you're, you're the person who answers the phone. It's like, we've gotta give them projects. I mean, I, I did a intern back in D C and I just lucked into it that my immediate supervisor was out on the honeymoon. And so I was the person for three weeks and it changed my life.
Do you, do you want somebody that would make it Valerie's hard job worse, harder?
She's gotta have fine, so. And the other things is sometimes they're, they are drudgery jobs. But you put them to work on that and give them experience on other things, well, you know, we, we've got a lot of scanning in the planning department. And that's something an intern can do as long as it's peppered in with other projects. That doesn't make them feel like we're just using them as a meal to climb up the mountain.
Yeah.
Appreciate that input. I definitely wrote that down and um, I will follow up with Lisa with Anna Brown for the seventeenth. Uh, any other comments on employees?
I've got great ones.
And we will aspire to have even greater ones as we go forward, so, as we develop and help support them, so. Um, any other comments or items that the Board of Commissioners would like seen with the strategic plan? Uh, priorities, initiatives?
No, I'm, I'm very happy with how it's turned out. I have. I have a lot of ideas, but this is already perhaps more than we should have, so.
So, my plan is uh, touch base back with our consultant. Uh, have us uh, finalize these things. He has a final report he'll be sending out. And hopefully we'll have this for uh, our first meeting in September, along with the Capital Improvement Plan process, so we can. Just start clipping away on that as we work with Dave on that, so. I appreciate your time today. I think it's been very valuable and thank you for buying into this process as we went through it over the last six, seven months.
And good.
Okay. Any other thing related to this? If not, we'll call this work session adjourned then.